Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
Item of approval with the agenda addition. Second.
I have a motion by Campbell, second by Gross to approve the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that is not on today's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval. Second.
Did you do that? No. Motion by Haney and second by Campbell to approve payment of bills and vouchers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We have some employee recognitions that Commissioner Gross is going to hand out this morning.
Okay, this morning we got five longevity awards. Well, they are longevity awards. Starting out with the first one, we got Lorraine Sitz, motor vehicle. Lorraine is 25 years in, up at the motor vehicle department, so you've seen a lot of people up there in this town.
All right.
Oh, well, just a minute here, you can't take off right away. I'm going to make you wait in line for a while. Sign up on break. Cheryl, you want to give her a few words?
You know what it's really like. We have been so fortunate to have Lorraine. She retired seven years ago, and thankfully she comes and works two days, sometimes three, sometimes four or five. We could not have done it without her extra on staff and doing our dealer work and just helping us out. She is an awesome addition to our staff who works very hard, so we sure appreciate having her. And even though she's retired, I hope she keeps working.
Thank you, Jen. Next one, we got Julie Kennedy with another 25 years of service. Kirk, you coming up here?
I'm coming up.
Very good. Morning there, Julie.
Good morning.
Thank you for your 25 years of service. You're coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie runs our household hazardous waste facility, and she's out there all by herself, and she does a really, really good job. The household hazardous waste facility, it takes an awful lot of paint, but anytime you know any kind of household hazardous waste chemicals, come on out because she'll take good care of you out there. Thanks a lot for your 25 years and looking forward to at least a couple of years for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And thank you, Julie. Another 25 years. Linda Cruz. Must be the going thing today, is 25 years, huh?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sandy, you got a few words?
I do. So Linda actually came to Clay County in 1990, but she was a seasonal bilingual person who worked in the migrant season. She then came to social services in 1994 and joined my unit in 1996 as an upper support person. Moved up through the range, she became a support enforcement aide, and now is a child support officer. She's been doing that for 20 years now. She has a specialized caseload establishing paternity and court orders for child support. And so, a lot of years of experience here, we're hanging on.
That will move up the line a little bit. 35 years. Michelle Hughes. And we got Holly Warner.
Thank you. So Michelle began her career with Clay County in the planning and zoning department. In 1987, she moved to the auditor's office and eventually to social services in 2000 where she's been with us since as a case aide. She's instrumental in the day-to-day tasks for case managers and assessors and has really worked to streamline a lot of our new initiatives with DHS. So thank you, Michelle, for your years of service with Clay County, and congratulations.
Right. Thank you, Michelle. And with that, we move on to 40 years. We haven't handed out too many of those yet, have we? Janet Holverson.
Congratulations, Janet.
Thank you.
Larry.
Thank you. Janet's one of our long-term care workers. There's only two of them in my office. She works with anyone over the age of 65, primarily it's our nursing homes, and then with our aging population where her caseload has increased dramatically over the 40 years that she's been here. So she works very closely with our nursing homes, our funeral homes, for county burials, so basically any of those agencies in the community. I think somebody comes there and has questions, they say, "Contact Janet at Clay County," and she'll answer them. She does a great job, and she's wonderful to have around, and hopefully she'll be with us. I think we've got nine more years left before I can retire, so. That's what she said yesterday, was that she was going to buy mine. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we'll move on with our agenda. Thanks to everybody for all those years of service to the county, we do appreciate it. Next item, our item, public hearing on a request for approval of a 16-lot flat-division Linden Trails in Oakport Township. We have a motion for the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Mojo, second by Campbell to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Good morning.
Good morning. Today I bring a recommendation from the planning commission to approve a 16-lot flat-division, which will be Linden Trails subdivision. It is in the northeast quarter of Section 10, Oakport Township. The recommendation comes with a couple of conditions. There were some things noted at the planning commission that we wanted the applicant to state that they understood that would be improvements. We have that in writing from the applicant that they will adhere to the stormwater drain to train in the state of Minnesota and Clay County, some improvements to the internal road so that they meet county standards, and then some screening of trains along the south and west side of the property to create a buffer. Additionally, this was considered a conditional subdivision because it was not on wooded or marginal soils. The planning commission did also approve that conditional use permit for this. With that, the applicant and lower engineering are here to answer questions as well if you have any.
Any questions for Emma?
I read this report, and I did read the concerns of Steve Bigasaw, who was a neighbor, and I'm assuming condition one was.
About the drainage.
Yeah.
Yep.
Takes care of his concerns?
Yes.
Other than that, I think he was, that was his only concern?
Yes.
Okay. I have no other.
Any other questions for Emma? Anyone else that would like to be heard on this item today? Anyone else that would like to be heard? Seeing none, we have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing. Second.
Motion by Gross, second by Haney to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. What are the board's wishes on this item?
Mr. Chair, I move the recommended planted subdivision with the conditions set forward by the planning commission. Second.
And a motion by Campbell, a second by Haney to approve the request.
Just have a comment. There was quite, I think, good conversation that happened at the planning commission meeting, and it was noted that there seems to be a growing number of these going up in that area of the county. So the current concerns from residents were basically if it would, you're losing the rural aspect of it. And so I think those concerns were really brought into the conditions of the permit, but also the covenants that the developer had talked about, making sure that they had. And so, not only the drainage piece that you noted, but also the, you know, the limiting dogs or outdoor RV parking and stuff like that was noted in that. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Emma. Next item is presentation on Region Four Transportation Coordination Council. Heather.
Do you have more than just one person?
No.
All of them, Heather and Missy have the different chairs.
Make sure your grandma Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. I come around, my name is Missy Becker Cook, and I'm the director at West Central Community Action. And so our kind of sister agency is Lakes and Prairies, and we work real closely with them. And one of the things that we do in Clay County is our energy assistance and weatherization program. And so I just wanted to just touch real briefly on that. Clay County, of course, is our biggest county that we serve, and last heating season, we had $1.2 million in energy assistance to 1,911 Clay County residents. So that's a big impact in the community. And I also would like to report that our relationship with Morehead Public Service is going very well, and things have improved drastically. And so my staff are very happy about that. So that's great. And we also do weatherization services up here in Clay County, and that's where we go into homes and provide insulation and caulking and weather sealing. And we completed 54 homes in Clay County for $166,000 this last year.
Great.
So any questions about that or comments?
I just maybe want to further that comment about Morehead Public Service, just for people that may be watching, that was a billing issue that really was tricky in terms of how they billed, and it would go to a resident and not just onto the bill. And so I think working through those hiccups really streamlines the process, but also I think is a better use of those dollars as well.
Absolutely. We were seeing real high reconnect fees, and disconnections were happening kind of outside of what the federal guidelines allowed. And so the state commissioner came from Department of Commerce, and we had our first meeting, and now we're meeting monthly with Morehead Public Service, and that seems to be, we can kind of head off problems before they start, and so that seems to be going really well.
Frank.
You said you gave out a million dollars in one item and $166,000. Where is all your funds coming from, or where do you go?
Oh, that's a great question. So energy assistance is federal. It's a federal program that comes from the federal government, and so is weatherization. That comes from the Department of Energy. Both of those programs have been on the chopping block now for the third year. We have very good bipartisan support for energy assistance and weatherization because they do make such an impact. And energy assistance money, as well as weatherization money, it goes directly to the vendor. So if you apply for energy assistance with our office and you're awarded $900 to help this heating season, that goes to the vendor of your choice. So it's huge, it's a huge impact to Clay County, that kind of money. But, so again, like I said, we're on the chopping block, have been since the new administration came in, and we have strong support in the Senate and the House, so hopefully it will all work out, fingers crossed. But, you know, we never know. It's just like your social service funding, or, you know, it's all money that can go away too.
No, thank you for that. I just wanted to let people know where this money is coming from.
Absolutely.
It's not out of our property tax and stuff like that.
No, no. It's a federal program.
It's a federal program.
Yeah.
A lot of money coming in.
And energy assistance is, you know, in our, in the northern states, it's so important for seniors and people to survive the winter months, but in the southern states, it's used for cooling, for air cooling for people, and so equally as important.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I wanted to talk about the Regional Transportation Coordination Council. This is a program that has been, came from MINDOT. There has been extensive studies done, just kind of a little bit of history, starting back in 2006 is when it began, and then in 2013, as well as in 2017, is where kind of the local human service transit coordination plan came from. So from this plan came about the regional transportation coordination councils where our, it's broken out into regions throughout the state of Minnesota. So ours is Region Four. This past year, as of July 1st, we have been in the planning phase, looking at taking the results from the 2017 study and kind of working on what are we going to do to fill these barriers and gaps. Within the handout that was provided, there is this, and they're talking about a little bit more extensive in regards to the regional transportation coordination councils, and looking at different activities, excuse me, to, basically, we want to fill the transportation gaps, provide more service with the same or fewer resources, streamline access to transportation, and provide customers more options of where and when to travel. So I come to you today to ask for your support as we go into the implementation phase. Implementation phase will start on July 1st, and we're just asking for continued support for, as we work on, kind of, we have goals and objectives. So from that study, we, as a Region Four, came up with various goals and objectives on how we're going to make transportation more effective and efficient for Region Four. So as of July 1st, we will start looking deeper into all of these goals and objectives on how we will do that for Region Four. And so I just ask for continued support for this next upcoming year as we go into the implementation phase for us to continue working on streamlining transportation within the region.
We're not asking for monetary support. There's no money that we're asking for, we're just asking for commissioners' support in applying for the next phase of the.
And if I could just add, so Lori Van Beek and I, Lori, the transit manager with Matt Busker, the city of Morehead, and myself, along with a multitude of other stakeholders from the whole nine county region, have been meeting with Heather and Missy and MINDOT folks, talking about in terms of the planning phase. So now we're moving into the implementation piece. And there's been a lot of questions in our region from, you know, folks, human service folks, and folks that have already, you know, been involved with transportation, how would this work, and would it replace what we're currently doing, would it overlap, would it duplicate? And I think all of those things are, you know, topics of discussion, and how would it be funded, and what kind of commitment are you looking for from the county? And as you would suspect, we have some, our county being one of the largest in our region, and some very small counties. So our transportation needs are very different across our region. So there's been lots of conversation in figuring out how will this all come together? But as I've read the bylaws that, and have been a part of developing the bylaws and the overall plan, it really is coming to the table in part. And I think you've heard year after year from our local advisory councils on mental health about the difficulties with transportation. So I think our participation and being at the table is important and critical to figuring out, at what level does Clay County become a part of this or not become a part of it? And we would have those discussions along the way. And I think just in talking with Lori as well, that's kind of where you're sitting as well. I don't know, do you have any additional comments you would want to make?
Yeah, the participation's good because, you know, we are able to work together as both public and private transportation to see how we can help each other get our passengers moving across the entire region. So it's not just within the city of Morehead, but someone from Morehead who needs to get elsewhere for appointments or visiting, you know, just whatever reason you might have to get transportation. At MINDOT, I just participated at a meeting where MINDOT was talking about future funding. And they did, they are looking at $1.5 million being set aside annually to fund the RTCCs going forward after the implementation stage. And that will require a 20% local match at some point, but, you know, at that point, we'll know more about what the purpose is and what's being implemented and how it will affect the region. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for these ladies?
I just have a comment. So in the past six months, I think I've been at different meetings where we've either heard the veteran service officers say that they've started going to northern Clay County to wait there for, sit there for a day and have people come to them because it's a transportation issue for these veterans to get to Morehead, to kind of hook them up with some services. But also Lakeland Mental Health Center has a 40 to 50-day child psychiatry wait period at their Morehead clinic. And their Fergus Falls clinic, you can get in within usually a week. And so there's an option there for people to get services quicker, but sometimes the transportation is the problem. And so I think that to have a collaborative conversation, to figure out how best to deal with roadblocks, is one, going to save us a substantial amount of money, but also kind of help these people who are just stuck in these ruts to where they can't figure out how to get the services that they need, even though they are provided.
Kevin?
Just looking at this, I'm glad to see, and I kind of focused on item number two and item number six here. And I've spoken with some volunteer drivers that we have here in Clay County, and there's some, there are some frustrations and some hurdles that need to be resolved. And like Commissioner Mojo just said, I, you know, because they're a volunteer driver doesn't mean they're doing this for absolutely free. But it still is a much cheaper way to go than having to hire and keep a full force of transportation people. And I believe that if we can improve on number two and number six, I think you're going to see a wider range of people volunteering to drive. And I, you know, and so I think if you really want to, you know, and I think in some instances, that's going to be one of the best ways to deal with the rural areas, is if you can get the volunteers, you know, from a, and again, when I say volunteers, there's still a compensation that needs to go with it.
Absolutely.
But they, but that compensation, again, is much cheaper than what you probably see and what you have to deal with, with buses and full-time drivers and those types of things. And again, I know of people who might have just retired that would love to be able to, you know, spend some time and go out and help to get these people in different locations. But there's, and they're, some of them are actually addressed quite to the point in your bullet points here.
Yeah, so that's what we'll hopefully be starting to implement in this next.
Yeah, so if you can work on those, and I think there's some opportunities to really improve that force, that at a more reasonable, and I don't mean to say that other transportation isn't reasonable, but it's more cost-effective because you're in populous areas, you know, so.
And, you know, our community needs assessment that goes back 20 years, that transportation is always in the top three. And Morehead, Clay County is ahead of the game compared to Grant County, and, you know, Traverse County, Wheaton, you know, how do you get somebody from Wheaton to Fargo for a doctor's appointment? You know, those kinds of things. And so, yeah, I think this will be great, and, you know, the goal is one click, one call, kind of years down the road, like people can call one number, and we would connect them with either volunteer driver program or, you know, a program that already exists. I mean, that's a pretty lofty goal, but it is what's needed in our area.
So, and maybe Rhonda, for you, in the volunteer driver program that we have in the county, and those volunteer drivers are compensated, are they compensated based on a state criteria? Are we allowed to make, to establish any of the criteria locally here on the compensation piece?
Yep, it depends on what service or transport. So if it's a medical, if it's an individual on medical assistance and they have a medical transportation need, and we use a volunteer driver, then there's some parameters around which how we reimburse them. We can reimburse them the IRS mileage rate, but it's only for the time when the individual's in the car.
Mm-hmm.
And so the no-load miles that we talked about.
They can be waiting four hours for a minute. That's very.
Yes. When we use volunteer drivers for some of our social service programs, like families who are serving in the child protection system, that's county-level levy dollars, and we pay them there and back. So it is very frustrating for our drivers, for sure, that no-load piece is.
That's critical.
Yeah.
You know, and again, I think if we can fix that, it's going to improve those rural services and still be a much cheaper alternative.
Yeah, and I think some of the conversation is around when you have a regional kind of hub that coordinates, you could be more effective with using our drivers where there might be a transport need to DL, but then a transport need from DL back. So they kind of minimize some of the no-load, be a little bit more efficient on where we're sending our drivers and coordinate across our region.
And then there's one other area that I, and I, because a few of these drivers have spoken to me about some of these issues, and another one would be that, so they book out to take somebody to some place, maybe they might pick them up in Morehead and Sunnyside, I've even heard where they could pick them up in Fargo. I don't know what all that is all about necessarily, but, and they might have to drive them to, you know, Brainerd, or who knows what, for whatever reason they have. And so they book their time and everything, and they'll go there, and there might be a no-show.
Right.
And so now you've got a volunteer driver who had made a commitment and maybe had canceled other things he could have done, you know, so that's, it's frustrating to them when those types of things happen. I'm just pointing out some other examples of issues.
Anything else for these ladies?
The piece that we would be asking for is the bylaws. I would certainly continue to serve as a member of the planning committee for the RTC for our region. If the board approved, I would go ahead and sign the bylaws and submit to Heather for inclusion in the grant application. Or we simply could do just a letter of support, either way would be fine, but unless the board would choose to have a different representative on the committee.
Sounds like you're volunteering on that.
I think to have you sign as a representative is, I'm fine with.
I can't think of anyone that would be better to.
We can't either.
Yeah, we can.
Do we need a motion to support that, to support their effort here?
So this is, you've reviewed all of these bylaws?
Yes.
Is this anything that needs your review, Tony?
I don't believe so. I'll take a quick look at it, if necessary.
We'll make a motion to support, I think, a motion of support, but also to have Rhonda serve in that capacity.
Second.
Motion by Mojo, second by Haney for the support. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies.
Got one for Frank. On your brochure, I see you've got five counties in there. Is Clay County included in this one?
You know, that's another good question. It's not included because our five core counties are Pope Douglas, Stevens, Grant, and Travers. Lakes and Prairies does the state services for Wilkens and Clay County. You know, 28 years ago, we were approached to run the Energy Assistance and Weatherization Program because I think at that time, administration was different in both community action agencies and the, Lakes and Prairies was more interested in self-sufficiency, Head Start-type programs. And so we were asked to take that on and so West Central did take that on and have continued to run it for 28 years, I believe, because it was my first year of employment. That's the reason I know the number. And so, you know, you have a great cap agency here and we work very closely with them. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Road update, Gabe?
Mr., while Gabe's on his way up here, I'd like, yeah, Dave to come up too and maybe he can give us a road update on some things.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'll start off, just kind of backtracking a little bit on kind of what happened towards the end of last week since our last meeting and then over the weekend. So last week, Dave was with me. We had a representative from MINDOT in the State Patrol and in the Watershed District. We met with the city of Georgetown and went over their plan. They've got a really good plan in place as far as if the levels get high enough to protect the city of Georgetown. Last Friday, we did a dry run of the emergency operations center, so we set everything up there, did a workflow, did some scenarios, so that was really good. And then if you haven't seen it, last Friday, we had Valley Water Rescue come out and we went down around County Road Two and 100th Street in Southern Clay County and got some drone footage of the south branch of the Buffalo River coming out of its banks. So it's on our Sheriff's Office page. So if you haven't seen it, it's pretty impressive footage. And then right now, our biggest problem continues to be overland flooding out in the county and that's, you know, mainly because of plug ditches and culverts. And Dave can talk a little bit more about that. But this morning, I did hop on National Weather Services website and I printed off the latest levels and then predictions. So if you guys would like to take a peek at that, I've got for all the Red River, the one over there for free, and then the Red River, the south branch of the Buffalo, the north branch of the Buffalo to Holly, and then the Buffalo River north of Delworth. So everything looks pretty good. Obviously, the Red River, the news on that, the smelt has been great. I've got another one for Steve. Do you guys have enough over there?
Yeah, we have enough.
Okay. Anyway, obviously, the weather conditions have been excellent. The red right now, they're showing that, you know, next, what, Monday, 34.6 feet. So that's substantially better than the initial. Second page would be the Buffalo River near Delworth. There's a gauge north of, just off of County Road 11 by Concordia Church there. And that looks like that's, you know, the next day or so, gonna hit 23 feet and then start dropping, which is good. I drove through it this morning and it's definitely fallen out of its banks. And then the south branch of the Buffalo, that gauge is out by Saban, and that is, has dropped and looks like it's going to have a really nice steady drop into next week. So all good news. Holly, I usually don't have much of an issue by Holly anyway. And then I did put, I included an email I got yesterday from the National Weather Service. This is just a spring thought update. Basically, they're just commenting on how the weather's been favorable and whatnot. And then the last page is a map of the city of Georgetown that Houston Engineering put together. It just shows some of their trigger points and whatnot for when they would need to plug holes in their levee system. So I just thought you may find that interesting.
Yes, thank you for that.
Yeah, and then as far as the, I guess the people that are doing the brunt of the work right now would be the highway department engineers over the weekend. I mean, Dave can expound on that a little bit, but they've been doing an amazing job. So I'll let him talk about that.
Yeah, over the last week or so, 10 days, we've had as many as 30 roads closed. A few of them are going down already, so we're down to like around 20 to 22 roads that still have closures on them. Water has progressed from Barnesville up towards Cragness. It seemed like the push right now was getting towards the Cragness area. We're starting to lose some roads and water's coming up and over and closures there. Some of the roads down in Barnesville, we've taken signs off. We've been out there taking pictures, identifying them as potential sites, mostly seeing just surface gravel being lost, you know, so we're going to track that. And Gabe and I are meeting tomorrow morning with some preliminary numbers. So we're also working with our county's office on staff time. We have hired numerous contractors, probably did more, as much digging it seemed like this year as we did in '09. We've done digging, we've hired three or four different contractors, some on the north, some on the central, and some down south to help dig in ditches out. Even yesterday, last night, we were out digging ditches and I'm sure, I've been working with Wade from Watershed, they're doing the same thing. They've got all kinds of contractors hired, they've got some really big ditches and if those don't get opened up, everything that flows into them starts backing up and that's where you get the homesites. We've had our water pump out in numerous different places. We've had to hire a water pump. Last weekend, we experienced an issue down on County Road, or up on County Road 18, somewhat resulting from our grading plan in 2013. We haven't had any water, substantial amounts since then. We've changed the drainage a little bit and what I'd like to do is get a hydraulic analysis. We used to have the water go on both sides of the road. Now, because we filled a ditch in, everything goes on the north side and it doesn't go to the west as easy as it should, it's too flat. So the water wants to go straight north and as it does, it ponds up and there's a couple homes there that are, that we had to pump, so.
So the water, the water that was, the ditch that was on the south side of the road is no longer there?
Correct, yep.
And so all of that water goes north?
Yep, dumps across the road on the north side and it's supposed to go to the west. The ditch is too flat and the easiest course, as it builds up and gets pressure behind it, it goes north. And as it does that, it also fills and swirls around where the two homes are right there, so.
Is that supposed to flow straight west to the creek here? Does it go under 75?
No, no, then it goes straight north to that creek that kind of goes by, I believe, kind of by Sematary.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, water always, I mean, we all know it takes its easiest course and as the pressure comes behind there, and it flows pretty good in that area. It goes really good to the north, but I've got some ideas on what we could do to improve things in this area. It'd include adding a culvert, maybe requesting a removal of one of the field entrances to, you know, less blockage along the route, putting a trap in there that would eliminate water from going towards the homes in emergency situations, but I guess.
Rather than remove a approach, couldn't you just culvert that or?
Well, there's two culverts in there now.
Okay.
So maybe we add a culvert in one of the approaches. They're pretty much side by side. We worked with the landowner back in 13 because we really needed a place to put dirt and I kind of think there was an additional culvert that was negotiated out during right-of-way process. And, you know, it might be a chance we can negotiate out getting rid of one of those approaches.
So John Jones, I spoke with him this morning and that's up, he's part of the area that was impacted by that.
Correct.
And is part of that right now because culverts aren't open or, you know, so it's backing up or?
I think the biggest thing there is it's a change. The water, there was never a culvert there under 18 in this location, so I think the water went straight, on the south side of the ditch went straight west. Now that we've got this new culvert we're putting in, there's a lot of water in that field there, just east of 28th Avenue there, kind of just east of the Moorehead stormwater ponds. I mean, it takes a lot of water in that area and it's, it all ends up in the north ditch and it just, we did have the backhoe out there, I think it was Saturday morning, and we dug it out and it just wasn't moving. It's just super, super flat ditch.
If you recall, when we did 18 too, we asked for additional right-of-way and, you know, I think there was some tree removal and stuff like that that went on on the north side of that road. And I think as you go, I'm glad you're dealing with this, but I think, you know, John's here and I think if you can also be talking with John, so he's informed as to what your plans are to correct it?
Absolutely.
It needs, it sounds like it needs some correction.
Yeah, absolutely. We got to, you know, like you said, it was a problem that kind of surfaced several years later and I can see why and how it did. I think I can have another, just comprehensive look at the whole area and make sure we don't need jerk reaction into something that still doesn't fix it and then we'll get that fixed early spring, midsummer, we'll get it fixed.
Well, it doesn't have very far to go until it hits that creek.
Yep, true.
Right?
Yep, correct.
So it shouldn't be too hard to fix.
Less than a half mile somewhere's in there, so.
Anything else?
The only other thing, I guess if commissioners get any questions about people maybe out in the county that are looking for volunteers to help in their own efforts, First Link is, coordinates all the volunteer efforts for Cass County, Clay County, Fargo, and Moorehead. 211 is the number to call. So if they're looking for help, they can give their information to First Link. And then as volunteers call into First Link, First Link will put the wannabe volunteers in touch with people in need of volunteers. So that's a good number for volunteers and people needing volunteers.
Just, I talked to Jerry Button yesterday and they said that they had to cut into one of those roads just to kind of ease that. And they said they were having some communication problems getting ahold of somebody. Did you get ahold of them?
I thought they worked with our guys at the Barnesville shop.
Okay, good. I just wanted to clarify that that was clear because they just, they felt bad cutting into that road, but it got to the point where they just had to ease that.
Was that yesterday?
I talked to him yesterday.
Okay.
But I think it was Sunday night because I think, as your maps say, Sunday night was, seems to be the worst, I believe.
Yeah, he and I talked yesterday too, a little bit about some of the water that had receded on their roads. And I told him just go out and take a lot of pictures and then our motor grader was going to head out there last, you know, yesterday afternoon and smooth them roads out in case cars do drive through there, so should be all good.
Probably, it's probably not going to be needed anymore this year, but I think it would be good for us in the future, Gabe, to take a look at Cass County's policy for sandbags in rural areas and how they approach it. I know for us right now, and going all the way back to when I was a township supervisor, that townships could get sandbags from the county for infrastructure and that type of thing.
Yep, they still can, I said earlier.
Yeah, but, but just as an example now, in Clay County, we have it where the rural residents are kind of on their own to get their sandbags and everything. In Cass County, you know, their policy states that landowners can buy 1,000 sandbags from the county, you know, at 100 bucks a thousand.
Yep.
You know, and right now, I don't know that we offer that.
I don't know if we can or not because I guess I got to find out how we acquire those sandbags. Because if we got those free, obviously we can.
Right, right, but so I, yeah, if we get them free, we're not in the business to make money, but the point, I just want you to follow up on it and see how, you know, I'm assuming Cass probably uses the same sort of system we do to get bags, but.
I'm not sure. They're in different states, so.
Anyway, I just, I just think if we can, it just kind of can look bad if one county says, well, you can, you can get your sandbags from the county as a resident and then on our county, we don't provide it. I would like to.
I'll look into it and see what.
That's all I'm asking.
Wonder if we can.
Probably, not for this year, but I think for future. I just think it would be, it would be good to have similar policies if it's, again, like you said, if it's doable from wherever we get them from, that's.
Another comment, Dave, do you have an estimate as to how many of those rural residents got water in this week, over the weekend? I think there are.
I guess I don't know of too many that actually had damage, other than maybe one or two.
On County Road 10 and all.
10 had some. And I think last night, there was a lot of effort on County Road 14 by the Glendon Piler. There's a brand-new home there too that, and maybe to echo that, and I think something that maybe you can really help me work on, when people come in for planning and zoning permits, for building permits, wow, they are building way too low, way too low. By this drag strip there in Saban, there's a big shed with all kinds of doors put up. He's right down on the ditch bottom.
Yeah, he's got a pump going.
Yeah, I think if there's a way that we can have some sort of policy that says they either got to be above a certain elevation, two feet above the ditch, or maybe they do have that.
I think part of the problem with that, you know, specifically on that one, is when you talk, if you're not in, you know, if you look at the overlay and you're not in a flood zone.
Yep, it's ditch water though, right?
Right, but I mean, he really does have no barrier between the bottom of the ditch. I mean, he's got pumps going. I think, I looked in that shed, he's got water in that shed too.
He's going to need a dike around that for sure because that could happen on any given year. It could happen in July with a four-inch rain and, you know.
I think you're right, we should maybe talk, you know, either to Emma or just adding some piece into that.
Just one piece that maybe gets overlooked by all parties, you know, but it's something that's very, very important. It seems like it's becoming quite, almost every new home that we have, they're all brand-new and they're down in the bottoms.
Well, and the other piece to that, when I was driving around looking at roads, some of those places that I think you had purchased, bought out with bonding dollars, that was money well spent. I mean, a lot of those properties had some substantial water in them this weekend.
Yeah.
Down by the Buffalo.
Back to your original question, I think personally involved only like one or two that I'm aware of and maybe Gabe knows of more, but.
We've gotten calls, but I think a lot of it was, it was getting close and people were getting nervous and then it's receded since.
We're, we've had the pump up on County Road 91 for about two and a half days now and I think it's starting to level off. And that was resulting from a big watershed ditch that needed to get kind of opened up. And once that started flowing and lowering, things really were helping him out, but it's kind of, it was touch and go on that one. There was one south of Glendon, I believe, on County Road 72 in that area. They had sandbags out there and key contracting pumped that one, so.
When you say pumps, are they tractor pumps?
They're those big six-inch diesel-driven pumps.
The continent road on 75 and it hasn't broke loose yet, has it?
I don't believe so.
I noticed that, I mean, that's been going on, but.
Haven't gotten any calls or any barricading up in that area.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Dave, you're going to get together with Mr. Jones to talk about his issue?
Yeah.
Okay, Kimberly, next item is request for approval of out-of-state travel.
Morning.
Morning, commissioners. So I'm here today to request approval for out-of-state travel, to travel to our Federal Technologies, our software vendor, is putting on an educational symposium in May and I would like to get approval to attend that.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve by Commissioner Rose.
Second.
Talking by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? During that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign, motion carries. That was pretty easy, huh? Okay. Okay, request for approval of sidewalk replacement, Joe, and asphalt replacement on the campus project.
So what I have before you here is, the goal today is to request approval to move ahead with this.
Looks so different.
Yeah, I know.
I was trying to figure out the layout, but that building's gone.
We're waiting for Google to update there.
Gotcha.
But, so what we're doing is, as you look at this map here, the items that are in orange around the courthouse, we used to call it North Side Project when it was on capital improvement. And we had planned on coming through and replacing that this year. And we found that as we got along in the process, that the areas that are highlighted in purple are part of overall asphalt jail project. And, but the two kind of went hand-in-hand with design and stuff too, so we felt it was a, it was a good time to vote out this North Side Project for the courthouse. So what I'm asking today is to move ahead with just the orange right now. And next week, construction engineers will be by to explain the overall asphalt project that has to do with the jail. So, and what I had done here is I got a quote from two contractors, all finished concrete at 22,126 and FM Asphalt came in at 26,500. I believe it's a pretty good price that we got for this project that we'll be doing here, so if you look at, there's, we're going to be replacing some steps on both north and south side as a part of our overall ADA program around campus too, so. But with this project and then possible approval of the asphalt project that you see on this map, it's almost to the point where I think we've completed our loop around campus of all the bad concrete, so I think we're pretty much there, so. But with that, any questions for me?
Questions for Joe?
Are you putting a ramp in?
Yeah, actually, on the north side, north side, we're going to put a ramp down there and then south side there too, both where the two steps are, so.
Could be a ramp?
Yep, yeah, and then we have the, you won't see that S look or whatever, there's an upgrade to get a nice ramp there too. We did that similar method over on the south side of Service Center too, so.
Okay, excuse me. On our capital improvement, we had more orange in our maps. I mean, are these medians going to be taken out to some other? Excuse me.
You know, I think, oh, yes, the median, yeah, I noticed that.
They didn't come up as orange here.
Yeah, yeah, the medians on both sides there are removal. I believe those are within the. Yeah, yeah, the the mediums on both sides there are removal. I believe those are within the actual jail project themselves, so, because they're going to be replacing all that.
But that's not part of this project?
Yeah, and that, yes, and I was actually, I just noticed that the the maps I gave you, those little mediums were highlighted in orange, but that's not part of this this twenty-two thousand dollar.
Any other questions for Joe? Board's wishes.
This was, uh, this was in within your dollars available, right, in your?
Yep, yep, this, uh, will be, this project will be funded out of Fund 19.
A plenty of money there.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the project. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rose, second by Commissioner Haney to approve.
Just to clarify that that's the going with all finished, the all finished bid?
Oh, excuse me.
Yep.
Yes, going with all finished.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Thanks, Joe.
And as far as the projects start to plan, I mean, it'll be kind of in, uh, when they get going on asphalt, I think it's probably about early fall is when they're planning on doing this, so, thank you.
Why don't we do that before we take a quick break? Steve, you want to do that?
Sure.
Agenda addition.
Yeah, James is here too.
Hello, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Yesterday at our owners' meeting, uh, we had a change order presented that needed to be addressed, uh, I guess immediately as a there to that point in the project. One of the things that, as you guys are aware, as part of the juvenile center expansion, we're, we've expanded both beds in secure and non-secure, and in our non-secure program, a portion of the beds that we're expanding have to do with the transitional program. Again, the main focus of this program is providing kids with additional skills, both in the facility and the community in hopes of preparing them for for future success. And one of the things that we've done in the planning is we've tried to do a different things to kind of soften soften the the look of the the facility. And we've done that through some of that through the planning of the furniture that's going to be all involved in some of the decorations. Uh, most recently, at one of our owners' meetings, uh, a change order CP zero three zero was presented with the idea of skim coating, um, skim coating the walls would cover up the cinder block and give much more of a smooth, uh, smooth finish in that area. And so, um, construction engineers gave us two options. Option one, or option A is, uh, would just be to do the day room area. Uh, that would be thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Uh, and option B would be, uh, skim coating both the day room and then going into the residence rooms, uh, walls and ceilings, uh, and there, and that would be an additional thirty thousand, so a total cost of forty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Okay, questions for Steve on this issue? You know, we discussed this yesterday at our, at the construction meeting and, uh, you know, you had a good point, Steve, that we're, it's a ten million dollar project. We want it to look good when we're done, and so I think that's part of where we're at with this.
Yes, I think we, in the planning, there were a lot of frills that went into this building, and I know that as part of the planning, having that space be something that people felt comfortable that distinguished it from the other other parts of the building was important, and so that's where this came from.
Well, you know, and I I I remember going back quite some time when we, when we were talking about, you know, the need for this transitional housing, and I know I've had a lot of conversations with Rhonda about it. And, you know, one of the, one of the things that, if you listen to the experts, they say that when you're getting into transitional housing, it's it's best to, uh, get away from the institutional look so that they're, you know, so that they're getting into more of a, um, what you would see in a residential setting. You're preparing them to get back out and, you know, it's it's, I think it's also an incentive for some who aren't in that part, they they can see it and say, well, boy, I can't, if I'm, I'm looking forward to getting to that level where I where I'm not in an institutional setting and I, um, it. I think overall, it's probably, it's probably a a good investment on the part of the county. Like Grant said, it's a ten million dollar project and, and if we want to listen to the experts and all what they say about what we should be, how we should be designing transitional housing, uh, we should be doing this. I, you know, I think, well, and the concern right now is is our, um, our extra dollars are, have already evaporated.
Yes.
You know, uh, on on the positive side, you know, we've done very well on the other, other two construction projects that we've got going on, so I, you know, I think from a a long term standpoint, you know, there's the potential that we could, uh, shift some current monies that that we've had that have not been used, that we anticipated to use, you know, or we could, we don't need to do it now. I, in my estimation, we don't need to do it now, but that's, it's always an option for us. You know, that's, I just, I throw that out there for consideration because I, you know, we did, you know, I think on the on the correctional facility and and the law enforcement center, I think we're still in upwards of seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unused contingencies in those two projects. You know, so that and that's what I'm saying, and and there's going to be money left in those two projects, so I, that's where I'm coming from.
Something to consider for sure, so. Any other questions for Steve on this issue? Or the board's wishes?
Well, I I guess, Steve, when it comes to option A and option B, um, what do you, what are your thoughts? I mean, you were.
Option A is is going to cover your, the area where they're going to be spending the majority of their time in the day rooms, day room areas. Um, you know, I, I'm I'm no longer privy, I guess, to what the plans for what they're going to be allowing in their, in the residence, um, living spaces or not, but, uh, option A is just going to cover your, is going to cover your day room area, uh, television, kitchen area, uh, and the, uh, so again, they're going to spend a majority of their time, time there. And then the additional cost would be, would be moving that skim coat into the rooms, so.
Can you see if James has an opinion on that?
James, come on up. Morning, James.
Yeah, do you have, do you have a, an opinion on option A versus option B, or do you have a preference or recommendation for us?
Um, like you were saying earlier, I mean, I, it's best practice to have as much as a home environment as possible. Um, given that's, uh, up to you guys.
So option B.
Yeah, and I.
I think that's the right option myself, so.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we move forward, and originally, we planned for this to be transitional, and if you're going to have a transitional, do it right, and I would, I would move that we go forward with option B.
I would second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, let's take about a five minute break. Back to order. Next item on our agenda is the annual department update of social services. Rhonda, good morning again.
Got a lot on the agenda today. All right, good morning. Just be during the break, I made a couple sheets at your, um, stations, one of them being our organizational chart and the second one being information regarding our, our auto home placements. Um, I today am just have a few items I'm just going to share with you, so it's just a little bit of spackling of of information. Um, I didn't prepare all of our program, um, updates. My thought is throughout the rest of the year, I'd like for my supervisors to come and just have maybe fifteen minutes before you to talk specifically about their programs. When we try to do it all at once, it gets to be a bit overwhelming and a bit much, so. Um, so today, I first just wanted to give you an update on our organizational chart and our positions that you've approved this year, so, um, it it's a full one pager here. So if you just look across the top in the blue, you will see in red there the two supervisors that were just offered positions this past week that you approved this year. So Michelle Thoridall, to give you a little information on her, she is actually an external candidate that we've offered the position to in our children's mental health and child welfare area. She is currently, she's coming to us from White Earth right now. She's worked for about a year and a half for White Earth in the mental health service area. Prior to that, she worked fifteen years at Norman County. She was a lead worker, uh, in the program areas that she would be supervising, so she will be able to come in with some excellent children's mental health experience as well as experience in truancy, as well as child protection. So, um, we are excited to have her join our team and we are expecting a start date of April twenty-ninth. Um, the second supervisor position that the board approved in red there, Jessica Mickelson, Jessica is currently, um, an employee in our disability service area. She's been with us for five years, working in the, um, some of the program areas that she will be supervising as well, so we are excited to add her to our supervisor team. We had a great pool of of candidates, uh, internally and externally, so it was a very difficult decision, um, to make, um, but we're ultimately landed where we did and are excited to have those folks start. Um, if you look down on the grid on the far left then in, uh, red, we still do have one open position in our ongoing child protection area, which is our unit experiencing most of the turnover. And then also on the agenda, um, I am requesting replacement of an employee that has, um, gave a resignation last week. She's been with us for about a year and a half, um, in ongoing child protection, and it appears she's going to change kind of career path altogether. I think there are a multitude of reasons why she chose to to resign, but the, um, the complexity of child protection was certainly a piece of the decision, and unfortunately, that's what we continue to see in this area. So, um, we will have those positions to fill. Uh, in the middle of the grid, uh, where you see two red open, um, statements, so those would be the positions that, the one new position that the board approved and the vacancy that Jessica Mickelson will be, uh, leaving as she moves to a supervisor. So we hopefully will be posting those positions within the next day. My suspicion is some of the employees on the left are going to want to move to the disability area, therefore creating more vacancies in our child protection, child welfare area. And that, again, continues to be the struggle, but, um, hopefully we can get full staffed and and ready to go. So that's kind of where we're at there. Um, one of the things that just that I had highlighted to talk with you about is in terms of our child protection service area, some of the things that we're trying to do to, um, uh, address the workload issues and the complexity of that, that work. This last year, you approved getting all of those child protection staff laptops with some funds that we had, so we, we've got them all, um, laptops that they're able to take out in the field. They all have, uh, county issued cell phones. Those cell phones all have hotspots, so one thing is just trying to make them more efficient mobily because they're in and out of the office all the time. And having those cell phones where we can, uh, reach them in terms of safety issues, or they can communicate when they're out in the field on home visits. Um, one of the other things that has been happening over this last year, and Amy, our supervisor in ongoing area, has worked quite closely with our universities on trying to, um, engage social work students earlier in their education and, um, giving them a flavor of what our work is in child protection. So what we've, what we've done this last year is we've actually hired some senior staff, our senior students, to, um, come to our agency under variable hour case aid status. So they're working right alongside our child protection workers, so they've expressed an interest in child protection services. This really gives them a hands-on experience on what that's like, what is the day-to-day life of a child protection social worker. And having them employed under a variable hour case aid, in my mind, mitigates a little bit of the liability concerns we have when we have them maybe transporting kids or supervising visits, so they're working again right alongside that social worker. So, um, we had that, that, this last year, we had two case aids come to us from the universities. They spent, um, not sure, maybe, you know, six months as case aids. Then they were due for their internships in the social work program, so now they are our interns, and now they are employees who are interested in some of our openings. So we are kind of creating, um, kind of a hands-on learning experience, um, which I think has worked well.
Rhonda, is there anything, you know, I know, uh, MSUM has a pretty good, uh, program for social services and.
Yep, social work, yeah.
In social work, and is there, um, have we been able to discuss with them their curriculum that that talks about the real life work of, you know, in this area of child protection?
Yeah.
And have you talked with, um, with professors or anything?
Yeah, we have. Um, in fact, I know, um, we have our staff that go to present to, present with, to their students, um, quite frequently, and I serve on their, um, social work advisory board. Um, and we also are engaged with the Concordia Advisory Board as well.
Oh, good, okay.
Yep, yep, and so we are engaging them. In fact, we we engage them at various levels, um, first about what we see with with new graduates coming in, but we also, through the internship program, are engaging with them all the time about what we see, areas that, um, we think might be really good if they could beef up in the academic programs as well. And we're also trying to engage both Concordia and MSUM in our truancy intervention program that we have in partnership with the schools and the village on how we might be able to use students as mentors, uh, within our truancy program. It's kind of been on our radar for a while, so.
And if I can, just one more question, uh, in regards to the the area of child protection, which has just been an ongoing struggle, uh, for you and and for us, I guess. It is, I know you mentioned, uh, giving them cell phones. Is is the, is their safety a a big part of their concern?
Um, safety is definitely a concern. In fact, this last year, we had an employee, um, who is out right now on FMLA as a result of the incident, but she was assaulted by a kiddo that she was transporting, um, from one placement to another. Um, that employee is really struggling with the safety and the complexity of the work. So it's safety is one thing, but also when you're working with families in a mandated service system.
Right.
Which emotions are high.
That's my point.
You're dealing with their children, um, and we frankly have some very young staff. Um, and so building that skill and how to mediate these difficult issues, how to not take some of those issues personally when they're really just trying to follow the statutes and the rules, um, becomes another part of it. When you're coming into work and you have ten phone messages of individuals who are angry about one thing or another, and it's not just the the families we're serving, but it might also be, you know, our foster families experience difficulty with, um, placements as well. We we ask them to take these young kids in. They, they develop a love for them. They struggle then when they see them having to have visits with their parents and they don't feel that they're going as well, and they see the difficulties that kids have when they come back. So there are, young workers are navigating all of these issues, um, on a daily basis, um, with these systems, which can be really challenging. And that's why it's so important to have that, um, side-by-side supervision and adding this, um, additional supervisor, I think, will help because the staff, they do need that immediate availability for consultation on issues that come up on their caseload. So safety is definitely. The other thing that takes a bit more time is if they are going out to a home where we do have some concerns about safety, we're often, you know, we might say take. do have some concerns about safety, we're often, you know, we might say, take somebody with you, take another staff with you, or call law enforcement. Well, that takes resources as well, so the staffing pattern becomes difficult. I don't know, I don't remember the last time we've been ever fully staffed in this particular area, because either it's an FMLA, a maternity leave, or turnover. Again, we have young staff who are starting their families, and so the idea of overstaffing, if we ever look at that, is, could be helpful, because we're never fully staffed, so. But we're, we're continuing to, to work through those issues and hopefully we can make an impact. Okay, so that is child protection. The second handout I did provide for you is in regards to our out-of-home placements. I am happy to say that if you look at the yellow highlight in the middle there, that is basically the, the net effect of our out-of-home placements. So the first line, you'll see the placement expenditures. If you go over to the far right, you'll see the actual expenditures for 2018, three point two million we spent in out-of-home placements. Right down below that, we collected nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand in revenues for those placements, with our net effect being two point two, close to two point three million. We budgeted two point five, so we had about a two hundred thousand dollar reserve there for our out-of-home placements, which is really good. As you know, sometimes the costs for placements, it isn't just about how many kids we place, but it's where those kids go as well. If we have kids at high, that have high needs, high mental health needs, and they require more residential treatment facilities, those are more costly and then our costs go up. So in different placement settings, have different revenue streams that may or may not help us fund the out-of-home placements.
Is this an area where we can maybe see some changes once our new facility is open here?
Yeah, again, what we've talked about with the board is the idea of if we can utilize the West Central Regional Juvenile Center for some of our kids that we're placing out of the county, we're going to try to do that. The other thing is, and I spoke with you a couple of months ago about a grant that our region wrote, it's, it's community, or Community Intensive Bridging Services. It's a regional grant, but Clay and Ottertail and Pope and Grant are going to pilot the program. And really what it is, it's intensive mental health services for children who need a placement because of mental health behaviors. And we are going to try to partner with West Central on how to utilize their placement facility and then bring in mental health professionals and practitioners from Lakeland who are partnering with us on this to provide the mental health services and supports. Ottertail, as well as Grant and Pope are interested in that partnership as well, so if they have children, then they maybe could use that, not, this would be for non-secure, in that non-secure setting. So the problem we're having getting this off the ground is that Lakeland is having a difficulty recruiting and retaining the mental health professionals and practitioners that we need for the project. So we continue to need to try to brainstorm how we can work through that. But that's exactly how we would want to use the West Central, keep our kids close to home. Two point five million is what is budgeted in the 2019 budget. One of the things that doesn't necessarily get accounted for is from year-to-year placement costs, the daily rates get adjusted. So hopefully, if our trends stayed the same, the two point five million would still meet our budget needs going forward. So, okay, so that is out-of-home placements. Maybe going back to kind of our staffing pattern, one of the things that will be on the horizon this year is our space needs. And I did kind of note that in previous discussions that we've had. Right now, our agency is spread out in three locations in the building, so the whole fifth floor, we have our social service programs. And then on the first floor is our income maintenance in one area, and then our child support fraud and collections is in another area, actually four areas. And then on fourth floor, we have our licensers. So we're, we're kind of spread out. We, we are just running out of space on fifth floor. And I have been talking with Georgia about a space in the building, and I know right now the, the building is full, but we are hoping to come to the, I think it's the, the building committee or the, whichever committee is talking about space and talk about some ideas that we have for space. So I see that kind of conversation needing to come to the forefront this year.
Having your workers more out in the field in terms of having computers and our phones, are you able to eliminate offices? Are you keeping offices?
Yeah, no, yeah, we're not able to eliminate offices with that. We don't have a telecommuting policy, but workers are just kind of in and out all, all the time, so they still need that home base. They still, one of the things that we did in terms of safety too this last year is if you've been up to the fifth floor at social services, you've got the three wings. To get down each wing, you use the key badge to get entrance. So when individuals come up to meet with, say, a child protection worker or whatever, they can't kind of wander the, the hallways. But we were struggling with meeting space, so, you know, staff would bring them back to their office, or, well, that was kind of the choice, or, or a meeting room down the secure wing. What we did this last year is we had a option to build a door, two doors actually, that would create some meeting spaces right off the lobby, so we don't have to bring folks down the wings. That was kind of a safety concern that staff were, were concerned about in terms of people in the hallway. So we did that this last year as well. We still have a bit of a problem, because our supervised visits are within the secure wing. So families who have supervised visits, which sometimes go awry or don't go as well as we hope, can have access to the wing. So I've talked with Joe about, is there a possibility to move this wall here, so that all three of those spaces come off the lobby and people don't go down the wings? So we've got some ideas brewing and how we might mitigate some of those safety concerns as well. But space is, it's not ideal, but it's workable.
A little question on that. So Lakes and Prairies with their Rainbow Bridge, which is supervised, you know, the visitation piece as well, I wonder if there's any way you could coordinate, you know, I don't think their space is perfect either, but
Yeah.
Between the two agencies coordinating somehow. I, I mean, their use is so minimal compared to what yours would be.
Sure. Yeah, we, and we actually refer to Rainbow Bridge for some of our supervised visits, so they do plenty of them, and then we do some ourselves, depending on the circumstance or what's going on in the case, or if Rainbow Bridge is full and can't accommodate. I don't know that we've ever used their space, but that's certainly something to talk about. Okay, so space needs. The other thing just on the radar, which I'll probably be coming to you in the next couple of months on, is some succession planning for our long-term care services in our income maintenance unit. You saw Janet Halverson got her forty-year award today. She's not going to be with us forever, unfortunately. Her and her counterpart, Kim, has been working in that program for, she's been there seventeen years as well. These two ladies have been the experts, not only in our region, but statewide. People are calling them all the time in terms of our long-term care programs. They are incredibly knowledgeable and so good with our population that needs that long-term care. They are carrying caseloads of about four hundred and fifty long-term care cases each, where around the state, the average is around two fifty to three hundred. As I succession plan for them, we're concerned about how, how new people, not familiar with these programs, would manage it. So kind of developing a plan with how to, how to address that. Those positions do receive the fifty percent federal financial participation to fund them, which is always helpful in that income maintenance area, but that's a piece we'll be looking at over this next year. The other update, I just, I'm not sure Julie Savat, when she did her jail update, if she talked about the behavioral health services, but those are going very well. They've served approximately one hundred and thirty-five inmates, they've done about thirty diagnostic assessments, they're doing both individual and group therapy and providing case management services. Our agency works with the Lakeland staff alongside them in terms of discharge planning. They do have the RAP coordinator hired, but I think that was relatively recently, so we're still trying to get the RAP program up and going. And we'll be kind of monitoring our data so that we can kind of report on outcomes. We are using the seventy-five thousand dollars that Lakeland Mental Health Center provided to, as one-time funds, so we're using all of that seventy-five thousand this year, because the staff didn't get on board until October of 2018, so we didn't need that money. So we're using that this year. And then as a committee, I think we'll want to work on maybe engaging Dakota Medical or United Way on our project and see if there's some funding. We also are looking at the services they're providing, are, is there any portions of those that can be billed to medical assistance if the individual has that? So we're still trying to vet through that. Just a couple other things that will be coming before you, probably in the next couple of months. I think a year or so ago, you had asked departments to look at their fee schedules and, and to assess if there's any areas that fees could or should be adjusted. One area that we've been looking at is our corporate adult foster care and child foster care licensing fees. So the, this is the work that our licenser, David Holman, and Julie Clear does. So we have C.C.R.I., you may have heard of, Divine House, M.C.R.S., Access. So some of those facilities license sites, we license on behalf of the state their sites, and they provide twenty-four-hour supported living services to folks with disabilities in the community. We currently charge three hundred and fifty dollars for an initial license and two hundred dollars for a relicensing process. The rules allow us to charge five hundred dollars, and we, I, we did do, I did a state survey and all of the responses coming back, except for like two, they're all charging the five hundred. It costs us more than five hundred to provide the service. I did ask David to send out communication to our providers and say, well, this is something that we might propose to the board, what concerns do you have? We want to make sure that we would, could communicate to our board what issues you might foresee. And at this point, he's gotten no responses. I think because our neighboring counties charge that, that, and they're charged that, if they developed a site in another county, that's what they would be charged, so I don't know that they were too surprised that we might be looking at that. But we will bring more detail to you for consideration if we want to do that. My thought is, is if we did, January first would be a reasonable time to allow them to plan for it. And then also in regards to fees, I would like to have a conversation about, at West Central, we assess parental fees in the non-secure side, but we do not in the secure side. We can in the secure side, and I think that's an area we may want to consider. We've had parents say, you know, sometimes their children start in the secure side and then they move to the non-secure, where we assess a fee. And they've said, well, I want my kid to go back up to secure because
Agreed.
I don't want to be. And the policy goes by our child support guidelines, there's hardship issues built into that. And there's also pieces built into that, that say, for example, parents were the victim of, of the crime by their child, for example, stealing a car or assault or something. There's pieces where we would decide, we could decide not to assess that fee based on circumstance. So I think there's enough pieces built into it to allow for some of those circumstances to consider. But, so I think I'm working with our team to develop a proposal to bring before you as well, to look at that. Lastly, some good news, I, looking at our 2018 year end, we will, looks like we will end about four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to revenues over expenditures. Couple, and, and again, I need to go through in more detail the line items, but the out-of-home placement savings certainly jumps out at there as a, as a piece to, to why that happened. We also received about eighty thousand dollars in terms of payback from our detox operations over the years, and in our CD treatment area, which always kind of baffles me, because our CD treatment service area is very busy and there's a lot of demands. But the county share that we have, we had a little over a hundred thousand left in that budget, and I think maybe what we're seeing is more of our folks we're serving have billable sources, so MA or PMET plans or insurance. So that's an area we'll be looking at this year as well. But was happy to see that we were able to end it, so. So April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I do have my two supervisors, Amy and Quinn, here, who are, are going to be asking for a proclamation. And then May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so you will be seeing our advisory councils come to you in May with their reports. Any questions for me?
Any questions, Rhonda?
I told Steve, oh, ten minutes.
You did good, considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Are we up next?
Yes.
Okay.
All the same.
Amy and Quinn.
Kenny, can you?
Chair. Thank you.
Yeah. Good morning.
All right, so you maybe have met Amy and Quinn before. Amy's been supervisor almost three years now, been with the agency for fifteen. So when we think about longevity and child protection, child welfare, we kind of pick her brain a little bit about why are you, you know, how come you're still in it?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, that's right.
They've got the easiest job in the world.
And Quinn took over for Stacy Christiansen when she resigned, so we are coming up on six months.
For me?
Yeah, no. Year, sorry, six months and another year, yes.
Kind of a big year.
See how fast the time goes? Oh, my gosh. And Quinn did assessments, he had, he had child protection, and which is what he's supervising before that, so. Okay, so, take this in. So we did submit a proclamation for you in the board package. If you'd like us to share, can you, want to you share a little bit more on the child protection team, you know, what we're doing for child, our child abuse prevention?
Sure, so for our child protection team, I'm Don, I don't know if you guys have seen it, we're on the corner of eleven where we get the billboard that says, you know, prevent child abuse for April, it's Child Abuse Prevention Month. So we've secured that again for the month of April. Sometimes the company's nice, and if there's nobody that has any ads for the month of May, we keep it up, so we keep it up for even longer than we can. Along with that, we've created, Amy is my model today, we've created some shirts for our members of CP team, that we're all going to try to wear tomorrow to raise awareness. So those are going to be the various members of CP teams, such as school social workers, school counselors, and many others in our, you know, community partners that we have. So we're all going to wear that tomorrow, hopefully get a lot of pictures that we can throw on our social media accounts to just raise awareness for prevention of child abuse. You'll also see some decorations coming up on Thursday. We're going to have blue ribbons around the trees around the family service center and Robert Hass Elementary School, and I believe the courthouse as well, so on the front, we'll have some blue ribbons to try to raise some awareness for child abuse prevention month, as well as some of the pinwheels that spin, and we're going to put those up as well, so. And we reached out to a couple of different schools, heard back from Robert Hass, so we'll kind of have a nice little trifecta here of a lot of blue everywhere. Like Rhonda said, we've submitted the proclamation, just wanted to kind of update the board of where our numbers were at in terms of 2018. Unfortunately, it seems that numbers continue to increase each year, the NARA report. The in-house reports keep going up. As the population goes up, we definitely expect that to happen, but we'd sure like to see it go down.
Maybe one thing I would add is, we are working in partnership with Cass County, Dakota Medical, and Regrever Children's Advocacy Center on, it's an awareness campaign. It's been called Pledge to Protect, but it's going to, it's going to have a different name, but it's all about the prevention of child sexual abuse. And a curriculum has been developed, and we're going to be moving forward with kind of a train-the-trainer model. There'll be individuals in Cass and Clay Counties that will be trained in delivering this curriculum across school systems, across the cities and counties. And it's all about how to recognize child sexual abuse risk factors, how to keep kids safe. There's kind of a curriculum for parents and educators and other professionals. It's a surreal, hands-on, very clear messaging that we're going to start going out on helping grandmas, grandpas out there, parents in the school, bus drivers, parents recognize, you know, interactions that their kids might be having with other folks that could be conceived as creepy or just all kinds of safety kinds of things. So, it's, it's a really good curriculum, and so you'll start to see some of that come out toward the end of the year. And again, it's that partnership that we have across the. All right, would you like to?
Yes, we have the proclamation, and Jenny has agreed to read that, so.
The Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation. Whereas, our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Minnesota and Clay County. Whereas, in the year 2018, Clay County Social Services completed three hundred and forty-eight assessments and investigations of families and licensed facilities, assessed four hundred and ninety children for alleged child abuse or neglect, provided two hundred and thirty-five families with child protection case management, and ninety-seven families with child welfare case management, and provided care and services for two hundred and forty-four in out-of-home placement. Whereas, child abuse is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that may cause lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas, effective child abuse prevention succeeds because of meaningful and trusting partnerships created between parents, practitioners, schools, faith communities, healthcare organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas, family-serving, youth-focused prevention programs offer positive alternatives for young people, encourage parents and youth to develop strong ties to their communities, as well as provide protective factors that reduce or eliminate risk by promoting social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas, we acknowledge we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to the promotion of children and families' social and emotional well-being in safe, stable, and nurturing environments. Whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Clay County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clay County and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live.
Thank you, Commissioner Mojo.
I would move the proclamation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell on the proclamation. Second by Commissioner Gross. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. There you go, thank you. You're still on, Rhonda?
Loaded up on one day. Okay, as I alluded to earlier, we did have a resignation in our ongoing child protection unit. That individual will be done effective April seventeenth. I am requesting approval to fill her position. She was on grade seventeen, step three. I would anticipate bringing a new hire in on grade seventeen, step one and two. Darren did do a wage calculator. We'll see a little bit of savings with, with the transition, a little over four thousand. But the resigning employee, who was fairly new as well, so, but again, requesting approval to fill her position.
I'll make a motion to approve your request and backfill if needed.
I think backfill would be unlikely, but.
Sure, the bottom refers to him, and I know that. Say there was a possibility.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Thanks, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is Statement of Need for Outpatient Chemical Dependency Services. Beth's Place Recovery.
So.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Okay, we are here, if you recall, maybe a year ago, we were before you requesting the same thing for another agency, the Lotus Center, who was looking to start outpatient chemical dependency services in Morehead. They are getting themselves geared up, and currently their location is at 205th Street South in Morehead. The other outpatient chemical health provider we have is Anchorage, which is on Center Avenue. So, this would be the third outpatient provider that we could have in our community if the board approved a statement of need. Well, actually, Beth's Place is operating. It's just that in order for us, in order for Beth to provide services to folks that need public pay support through our consolidated fund, the county needs to provide a statement of need with her application to the Department of Human Services. So, that's what we're here to, to seek, the board's approval for me to provide a statement of need to the Department of Human Services for Beth to provide those services. So, I'm going to just turn it over to Beth to talk about her program, and then we'll answer questions.
It's Cassie.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay, I know, everyone does that. Hi, I'm Cassie. I opened on September tenth of last year. Currently, when I opened, I was booked out about three weeks, and currently I'm sitting at booking out to the end of July. So, a statement of need comes in with opening up to county funding would allow me to bring on more staff at this time, because we're seeing really this flux of drugs and alcohol still being a problem in our community. I've worked really closely with the county for years, have a great relationship with them. I traveled quite a bit to see what was the most successful and for the outcomes, because addiction's success rate is at about seven percent in the United States. So, I traveled to places that were running at the more to thirty to fifty percent, and then integrated that model into Beth's Place.
So, the pieces that were, that we felt met a need in our community is the integrated treatment model that Cassie is proposing in terms of addressing substance use along with the mental health issues, so that, that dual need in terms of her services.
So, what that really means, sorry, so what that really means is that it's going to be a one-stop shop. I've seen, I've worked in this field for a really long time, and we have people that come in, they're normally always DD, meaning dual diagnosis. If you're addicted to meth, you typically have depression or anxiety, where they fall through the cracks, as I'm going to have to refer. So, I wanted a place where you just walk down the hall. You walk down the hall, we're all on the same team, we all communicate. That's what has been proven to be the most effective, so then we know exactly where someone's at with meds, we know exactly where someone's at with all their counseling across the board.
Is this, Rhonda, is this something that, that we could use then, when it gets from our correctional facility with the behavioral health area? Where, you know, we, we only have them in our facilities for so long, and then, is this a follow-up place where they could go?
It definitely could be. I mean, our, our staff do chemical health assessments for folks at the jail, and if they're, as they're reintegrating back into the community, if, if treatment services were just recommended, this would certainly be a referral source.
It certainly doesn't hurt.
And that's something that we're working on right now. We had talked about that at our last meeting as well, and I'm currently working with F5 as well, so same kind of concept, where they're giving me their referrals to make sure that people are staying on top of their recovery for relapse prevention as they integrate back into the community.
Jenny? Well, I, we're on plenty of different committees that over the course of the year, we always are saying, what, what can we as a community do to help this problem? And so, I, I guess in, in order for us to help be part of the solution, I, I will certainly offer a motion of support to your facility.
So, that's what you need, Rhonda, a motion to support the statement of need for.
Yes, yes, and then I will, I will develop that based on our board summary sheet and provide that to Cassie for submission to DHS, yeah. The piece I would add is our staff.
We have a motion.
So, we have a motion, we have, we have a second from Frank. Any further discussion on the motion?
I, I just have one question on it. I'm Tony Wagle in the Clay County Attorney's Office. I see the bottom one DUI seminar instructor.
Yep.
I know our office had been talking about making a victim impact panel required on all DUI offenses. Is that kind of what that is? What is the DUI seminar instructor?
So, right now, I'm averaging about twenty-eight assessments a week. Probably about half of them are first-time DUI offenders. So, first-time DUI offenders, standard of treatment is you go to the victim impact panel, and then you also have to do this sixteen-hour DUI class in the state of Minnesota. That is a requirement. So, I contract currently with someone that does that training.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else on the motion? Any other discussion? Frank, you got some?
I, I would just add that Cassie has worked with a chemical health provider in Fargo prior, and our staff has very positive experiences working with her, and so feel very confident in that regard. The other piece that's highlighted here is that Cassie has proposed that when individuals successfully complete their treatment, that they, that Beth's Place would be a resource for them long-term without cost. And I think that's a unique and positive piece to this service provider as well.
I integrated that piece because what we're seeing in our younger generation, those twenties and thirties, is that they don't go to the AA and NA. And if they do in the community, they know people, they have connections, and maybe they're still using. So, they know they have that safe place. If they come into Beth's Place, that everybody is clean, that they're going to get a treatment model, they're going to get set up, but they come for free after they graduate successfully. So.
And in addition, as a part of, before bringing this to the board, we had Cassie meet with Kirsten and our chemical health staff to talk through the services proposed, and what we see as needs and barriers and pros and cons. So, we've kind of gone through that process and are, feel very comfortable and supportive of the proposed services.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries. Thank you, ladies. Come on up, Kirk. Matt.
Rhonda, you had all these important items, and we talked of garbage, I don't know, something that seemed around here.
I have a gas.
Next item is the request to accept recommendation from Solid Waste Advisory Committee to, for landfill gas system expansion.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of commission. I'm coming for you today to ask for your approval on the gas option for our landfill. As you all know, we're in the process of expanding our landfill by sale this summer, and as part of the project, we're going to be enhancing our gas system out there. The primary purpose to enhance the gas system is to heat the existing shop building out there that we have with the methane gas, and also try and make sure that we capture as much of the gas as possible. I brought Matt Evans along today to go through the, the options that we have previously discussed with the Solid Waste Advisory Group of Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell. And we also have discussed the, the options also with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. So, Matt's going to walk through the, the options fairly quickly, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Matt Evans with Burns &amp; McDonald's. So, like Kirk said, we did, we looked at some different alternatives to manage the landfill gas as part of the construction project that's currently under, or the design that's currently underway. And the design project right now is to design a new landfill cell, as well as close part of the landfill with a landfill cap. So, what this looked at was how are we going to control the landfill gas as part of this design? And five primary alternatives were, were assessed. So, just for background, so everyone's on the same page, as the garbage gets placed in the landfill, the organic components of it, the food waste, the grass, the, that breaks down and produces what we call landfill gas. And landfill gas is roughly fifty percent methane, natural gas being roughly a hundred percent methane. So, we're controlling that gas to, to manage it from an orders perspective, as well as just migration. It's just something that has to be done. And then, as a, it's also can be used beneficially, like what Kirk mentioned, is first, heating the shop. So, we have a plan to, to manage it, as well as heat the shop. So, in alternative number one, the idea is to collect the gas and then pipe it down to the flare system, which is located on the southwest corner of the property. And in that, so we'd be connecting into the existing flare. And then, to heat the shop, we would push the gas from that existing flare station back up to the shop. So, the shop's up on the north side of the facility. So, this is kind of the longest way to bring the gas down to the existing flare, you suck it down there, and then you push it back up to heat the shop. In option two, we do the same, the same type of thing where it gets pulled down to the flare system, but we've set up a valve system up on the north side, so we could just turn a valve and send three, three of the wells or four of the wells that are going in, and some of the landfill gas to the shop. The issue with that is that we would still need a flare, a small flare, because it could, when the shop isn't using all of the gas, we'd need to flare off that gas that's coming from three or four of the wells. So, then, option three is, is more or less doing what the current system is, how it's currently set up there. There's a temporary pipe that runs across the landfill from the north side and connects into the south side. So, it's, it's, we, we have to relocate a pipe that's going through where the future cell is, and this would be then moving that temporary pipe to another location. However, at this time, we don't have topography working in our, to our benefit, so we'd have to manage the, the condensate and the gas that forms within the pipe a little bit differently. And it would be challenging, and that particular option, option three, would require the most maintenance, it's, just for the operators out there, would require the most, most time. And also, it's the least reliable of the options. Option four is, is an option that we looked at where you use smaller flares, because, that would be solar-powered, we call them solar flares, and they would manage gas from three or four wells at a time. And they sit down at the base of the landfill, the toe of the landfill, and they burn off the gas from those wells. The challenge with that is then, as that gas collection system expands, we'd need more solar flares, and it's just kind of building out a number of different flares over a period of time. We could heat the shop with it by using those flares, but it's, again, we'd be adding more flares over, so it's, it's just a more short-term option. Then, option five is to put a new flare, larger flare, not a, not a, or similar size to the one on the southwest side, but we put it up on the north side of the shop. So, if you remember, the first option, we pull all the gas to the southwest and then push it back up to the north. This is putting a flare up on the north side, so we pull the gas from the north half of the landfill, and then we put it right in the shop right next to it. It can also, and then, over the course of several discussions that we've had, we've talked about putting a perimeter pipe in that could add some redundancy. That's in addition to what's shown on alternative five, it's taking part of alternative one. And so, we can connect the north and the south, and it provides. And so we can connect the north and the south and it provides a very long-term strategy for managing the gas at the landfill. So those are the five alternatives. Each one of those, we also included an expanded gas collection system, which is instead of just putting in three landfill gas wells, which was the initial thought, because that was the area disclosing, we would put in an additional 10. That's to better control odors as we move forward. So that's an important thing that both the SWAC and the previous conversations with Kirk and commissioners really felt strongly about. So that we have the, the expanded gas collection system.
One of the things that, and as a result of the, the work that Burns &amp; Mack did and NOVA did, they came up with these options and we presented them to the commissioners. And the commissioners asked us to rank the, the options or the alternatives. And so we ranked the alternatives, Matt and I ranked them. And we felt that option number five was the, the most appropriate one with the addition of the perimeter manifold pipe.
The perimeter manifold pipe is the yellow line you see going around the entire west side. That's where it connects the old with the new.
We went to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee last week, I guess it was last week, with our recommendations and we gave them a much more extended presentation on this. It was as a result of the presentation, it was the recommendation of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to recommend option number five as well. I truly believe this will address a lot of the significant issues as it relates to gas collection, but also I think the other issue is the, the odor issue. I think that we'll also be able to do a very, very good job with that as well.
The recommendation was alternative five with the perimeter pipe?
Right. I'm sorry.
So it was a hybrid of one and five?
Right. As far as costs, you have the cost there. The, the costs are within our budget, initial budget of the, the entire project. Again, I think it's going to serve the county well, not only for the immediate future, but I think long-term future as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I stand answering any questions.
Questions from these gentlemen?
I just remembered the, when I was on the committee, when I was on the city council, one of the issues, we were looking at using the gas to heat the new shop at that point in time, but the gas was too wet, was the determination at that point in time, wasn't it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, one of the other issues was when we were just doing a project alone, the, the price was not suitable.
Wasn't cost effective, yeah.
With the, when you encompass it in the, the overall project, the price becomes more appealing. So that's, that's why we're looking at it now. Honestly, you know, I think that right now we're flaring gas. I think that's really a waste of resource and I think that we can make better use by heating the shop. And honestly, I think it's the only best option we have at this point in time. Frank, it looks like you have a question.
Well, I just wanted, what kind of furnace changes would we have to make in the shop? I mean, we got a big unit in there now. What's going to happen?
Yeah, we looked at that. And the building when it was designed was set up to be able to convert to being heated with landfill gas. It has in-floor boiler heat, so they have, it's currently powered with electric boilers. So this would, what would happen is you would replace it with a boiler that can burn off of landfill gas. So we'd be, there's two locations where the electric boilers are now. There'd be a new unit likely in each one of those locations that can be, burn the, the landfill gas. And I would say too, this isn't uncommon. This is probably the easiest way to reutilize the landfill gas. Crow Wing County has a shop that they're heating with a boiler that, that we designed that a few years back. So, so it can be, it can be done. It's, it's a proven technology.
Will we have to have a backup heat system then, too?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we'll have a couple of backup systems. We'll, we'll retain the, the electric boilers. And we also currently have propane that heats the, the up, the upper part. So we'll have all those options available to use in case there's a need to do that.
So as the new boilers, the price is incorporated into the plan?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, that's the case. The, one of the concerns I had was whether or not that was going to be independent of that, but it's also all included in the overall cost.
Can you add something?
Yeah. What is your annual heating output?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I honestly don't know. I can't answer that question. That's off the top of my head. Sorry.
And just to clarify, Frank, we have a dual heat on our furnace anyway. You just add, we added an element for our boiler and we are also able to do propane on that same piece. So oftentimes it's, you don't have to replace the entire heating element, it's just a additional piece on there.
Kevin, you have something?
Yeah, I, you know, in terms of, you know, I think we need to be clear, I, the, this, this isn't be, being done for the sole purpose of, of heating the shop, because if it was, it wouldn't, it still wouldn't be cost effective.
Right.
You know, so, yeah. So, so, but because of where the landfill is going with its expansion, I think, you know, and I think it, it addresses it in alternative four, I believe it was, it basically just says, well, we're going to just try to keep bringing everything down to the old flare or whatever. And that, and that, that doesn't, it still has its own design issues with it. And quite frankly, when you look at these maps closely and you look long-term at where future expansion is with the landfill, not only do we go up in certain areas that are, that are there right now, but we have a really, a really future expansion is to the west. If you've gone out there in recently and you've seen where, where Kirk wants to have his big bonfire with all the trees and stuff there, that's a low-lying area, that's a future expansion area. And that's right where that proposed pipe would go. And that would be the purpose of getting it, if we're going to do it, just get all the infrastructure in now, so that as we do future cells, it's already ready for collecting the gas. You know, so, so you can either pay me now or pay me later. And, and right now, we look at the, the best way, and I think SWAC fully agreed, was to do that additional investment now on the, on the main pipe. Not only that, but it can also serve a, as a backup if, for example, if we had problems with the flare that was going on, the new flare that we're talking about that would go, you mentioned it was going to go to the north, it's actually going to go to the west. You might have just missed that. So it's actually going to go to the west of, so it's going to be behind the highway building. And then, so, but with that in mind, if there is problems with that, you know, we can still divert gas and then use the old flare. So the, the old flare under this plan probably would not be used much, but it would still, we would still have it there as a backup for, because the last thing we want to do is not have any way to burn gas off, because then we have real problems. So, so this, that, I, I do want to mention though, on this that we, you know, even, we've said that it's included in what we anticipated for the expansion. One thing we need to remember is regardless, we still are going to have to be looking at tipping fees and stuff that...
Right.
Moving forward. So that, you know, I don't want to hide that back to anybody then.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I, I think I've talked to you guys about that before. That's something that we're going to be coming back and talking to and you'll take the rest of the hair off my head at that point in time.
Frank, you have one?
Well, I was, you know, Jenny asked about, what are we using for gas now? We're paying for gas now. You know, I guess that is important, I think, that, you know, I mean, this is a worthwhile project, but should we do, be doing something else with this gas? Can we capture this gas and sell it to someone else or should we be using it ourselves and stuff like that? You know, it's just...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, one of the things that we did previously, we looked at all the different alternatives to use this gas. And this is absolutely the only thing that makes sense at this point in time. Probably about eight or 10 years ago, there was some discussion about pumping the gas and sending it over to Anheuser-Busch. Number one, there wasn't enough gas to be able to do that. Number two, the price of natural gas for Anheuser-Busch went down, so they didn't, didn't have a need any longer. You know, there have been some discussions about using microturbines and producing electricity and selling it back to Wild Rice, but the price again, to do that's minimal. Microturbines do not work that well. So again, that wasn't a viable option. We looked at compressed gas to heat, fuel the, the vehicles out there, because one of the things that that's kind of the rage now is taking the gas and using it for fuel for vehicles. Again, we don't have enough gas to be able to make that work, work well. We are going to be, to heat the building, we are going to be using all the gas out there. That's one of the reasons why we need to have this flare. I view the flare as almost like a pilot light. But we have looked at all the different options as far as the gas use and this appears to be the best one, not only now, but also in the future.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any board's wishes?
Well, I guess I'm looking for guys on the committee, I guess, to tell me what, what to do this, you know, because I'm, I mean, is this a worthwhile project? I mean, I'm looking, the final cost down there is like $499. Is that what our cost, what's our cost going to be?
Well, the total, well, the, the total expansion project of the, you know, which incorporated this into it was 2.5 million. But the, so with the option that's been recommended, with the addition of the main pipe, that, that is upwards of about 900,000 of the 2.5 million. That's, that's really what we're talking about here. So if you were, for example, if you were to choose another option, you know, you could, you know, you could in essence drop that 2.5 million down to something less than that. But are you doing long-term the right thing?
Yeah. If I could add to that, of the 900,000 that Commissioner refers to here, the, the majority of that, 700,000 of that is just needed to manage the gas on-site. And then a couple hundred thousand of that roughly is for heating the shop. So just to put it in perspective.
I guess the question I still have, how are we going to pay for it? Is that, is that in here? I mean...
Well, it's, that's, you know, solid waste is an enterprise fund. And so it's, everything solid waste is paid through service fees and tipping fees. The service fees are what, are the $42 that you see on everybody's property tax statement. The tipping fee is the price per ton that everybody pays one way or another to have garbage sent to the landfill. In, in either case, those, one or both of those are going to have to be increased. It's just the way, I mean, we have, we really don't have any choice.
And we've been discussing that for quite a while and it's, it's been a long time since we've increased any of that.
It's either that or we don't expand the landfill and we, we move it someplace else and that's more expensive.
Well, at this point, I'm going to look at the committee to make a motion.
Well, I, I would, I would move to go along with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee's recommendation to a high, to do a hybrid of alternative five and you could say it's a one or two, because that, actually, more like two, because one, we're not talking about having that extra blue line in there.
Right.
So it'd be a hybrid of, of...
Five and...
Five and two.
Yeah.
Is really what it is.
Okay, we have a motion. My Commissioner Campbell, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. Kenny?
Thank you. Last week, I conference called into the land management of the diversion authority meeting. There was property acquisition reports, talked about the upstream mitigation pieces that are going forward, gave an update on the crop insurance. And my comment after the fact is about a month or two ago, I think Joe from AD2S had given an, talked about restarting that Farm Impacts Working Group, that Ag Subcommittee. And, and I don't recall if they've met in the last month, but I have forwarded a couple names to people that I thought would be really great to offer the farmers' perspective on that. And so I don't know, Commissioner Campbell, if you know when they're starting or...
I, I haven't heard anything.
I just, I really think we should re-amp that and make sure that, even if they're new voices from farmers, just to make sure we're not skipping anything. I would really hate for that to happen. And then talked about monitoring areas and I believe on the Clay County side, those are all government entity owned so far.
At this point, yes.
At this point. Last week, I also attended a meeting brought together from Kevin from the SWCD, the Agricultural Best Management Practices Loan Program. The Ag BMP is something that the Soil and Water Conservation District Board has applications for residents who want to buy, either do septic upgrades or issues with wells or purchase equipment that could go towards Ag Best Management Practices. And currently they approve those loans through local banks. And anyways, we had a conversation to see if Clay County would be interested in serving as that. I don't know, the loan overseer for those applications is the best...
That's correct. Yeah.
Best way. And, and the thought process behind it is if there's someone who needs to do upgrades to their septic and they've been turned down by a local bank because of whatever reason, credit or, or whatever, it's something that the Minnesota Department of Agriculture offers these dollars that can be approved and then the county would then add those as a special assessment on their tax so that the, the work can be done. And it seems as though there's, well, I don't, there's no risk to Clay County. I mean, it's, you're going to get...
That's correct.
The money will be assessed so that, but I just think it's a good option. We had the assessor's office, the auditor's office.
Environmental Services.
Environmental Services was there. And I think it, I don't think it's something that would be used a ton, but I think it's a good option that we could offer residents. So I think Steve's going to have further conversations to see if that's something that we could work through to just bring it to this board for further conversation. I attended the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Meeting last week. We have a new member, Wilken County Commissioner Jonathan Green, who was just elected. We talked about several grants, upwards of $400,000 worth of grants. Had a spotlight on Head Start. They're currently enrolling for Head Start for next year. I think we have about 240, 251 Head Start kiddos in Clay and Wilken County, so that's a big deal. And talked about our annual board meeting that's coming up at the end of the month. I attended the Clay County 4H Federation Meeting, updates from lots of committees and there's some really great things that are happening in the county with those committees. Also a sad note to pass on, Brian Halverson, who served as the Clay County Fair Board President for a long time, passed away this last week. And so the Halverson family is instrumental in, in, in not only the 4H, but the Clay County Fair specifically. And so our sympathy, my sympathies to that family. Yesterday, I missed the Law Library Meeting because I was asked by a local producer to head out to onsite to, they had some solid waste questions. So Kirk Rosenberger and I went out there and I think between the MPCA and Board of Animal Health and Kirk's contacts, we should be able to address that issue. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Right. Last Wednesday, I started off, I had a meeting with Prairie Lakes and Purum. And that, that facility is running really well. The one thing that we're looking at doing is, is establishing a policy for allowing outside waste to come in there if the capacity allows for it, which could add additional revenues to that facility, which only helps all of us. So that was the primary focus of that discussion that day. Later that day, I attended the Diversion Authority Public Outreach Meeting and that one, we, again, we, we got updates on the North Dakota Legislature and the funding, land activity outreach, and updates on the federal funding, which was the, the project partnership agreement that was signed here a while back with the federal government putting in another $300,000 into that, or 300 million. So...
$300,000 into that, or $300 million. And then we had the land meeting, which Commissioner Mojo talked about, and I think that, I'll leave it at, leave it at that on that one. On the Thursday, the 28th, on the morning, I had the solid waste advisory committee meeting, and that entire meeting was focused on what we did today, and that's the, what option to choose for the gas portion of the expansion. That afternoon, at 1:00, we held a meeting to, regarding the FUD diversion, search committee for an executive director. That's, we've done, twice, twice done that, and it's been put on hold because of the litigation that was in place, but seeing as how there's some movement there, we are gonna probably be moving forward with going through that search again soon. That afternoon, we had the actual Metro FUD diversion authority meeting, and there was really nothing of significance at that meeting on that given day. We did, you know, they, that's received the reports on the public outreach and land management, and we continued to talk about how we mitigate different things, not only south, but, and then communicating with folks to the north of us as well, downstream of the project. Finally, yesterday, I spent the day in Minneapolis at the federal hearing regarding the diversion project, and it was quite interesting. The part, the different parties were there, and the DNR, you know, obviously, the diversion authority is asking, you know, for the injunction to go away on Plan B. And the, so the, we took that position. The Corps, of course, agrees with, with that, and, and the DNR, they spoke to the judge and they said that they were in a dilemma. And the dilemma was, was that because of the contested case, they look as, at the permit as being on hold, and so it's not a valid permit. And so they really, they don't really have the authority to, to allow the diversion authority to go, you know, forward without the conditions of the permit. And so, so the DNR's position was to either uphold the injunction or to, if they wanted to, allow the diversion authority to move forward with certain items in North Dakota, which really was what the request was, and a couple of the structures for now. And that was to, you know, the DNR took the position that they were okay with, with that being done, provided that the judge would issue an order that required the diversion authority to abide by the conditions of the DNR permit. So, so that's, you know, which we would have to do anyway, and we expect to do and we're willing to do. So, so in essence, that was good for us. I, the, the JPA presented their case, and they, they told the judge they believe he should wait until the contested case hearing is over, and, and one of the things that they talked about was that they still believe that the Minnesota diversion is a better plan. They, they flat-out said that in their court, that they believe the Minnesota diversion is a better plan, and, you know, the DNR and the Corps basically said that it's not buildable. It's, it can't be done, so. So that's, and so the judge said he would be issuing a ruling in the near future, so we'll, we'll see how that goes.
Mr. Gross.
Oh, we had, not really a meeting, but the census committee that we approved last week, we didn't really have a meeting on, but we did have a discussion on how we should proceed on that. And we're gonna wait till the small cities meeting, which is coming up in a few weeks, and discuss that with them, and then see how we're gonna proceed, 'cause Moorhead already has a committee, and I don't know what the county's involved is gonna be, but we're gonna wait, wait till that meeting's over. We also had a building committee meeting. Now, on that thing, we discussed, there's a transfer switch as far as the generator, they were gonna do away with that, get a, anyway, they're gonna put in a transfer switch that we switch over, there's a power outage and stuff like that. Approved that. A big thing that we discussed was the space issue that Rhonda talked about this morning, too. You know, I don't know, as a committee, whether we could do it, but I think we, as a whole group here in Clay County, groups, gonna have to decide, what are we gonna do with all the, I mean, they need more space. If we take people out, or say we kick people out, not kick, ask people to move out of the family service center, we're gonna lose revenue using up for that. So that, I mean, that's all good revenue coming in. So we tell these agencies to leave or something, you know, and we're losing revenue. In the meantime, we're taking up more space, so, I mean, is that the way to go? Or should we look at moving some of our people into a different building? You know, and that's, and I know we talked about detoxification, and I think we have to get very serious about that unit to see whether we can build another building or whatever we can do with that, utilize that space. I, I don't know how yet, but I think we have to have some serious discussion. I mean, we build a jail or law enforcement center, we build a correctional center, we build a juvenile, and we're really getting this county in good shape, I think, but there's more to be done. There's more to be done of that. And I think space is a big deal there, because, as I say, anytime we take up more space over there, we're losing revenue. We talked about the carpet and, carpeting the place here and stuff like that, and we thought, well, we're gonna hold up on that till we find out who we're moving around, where they're moving to. The asphalt plant, we covered at the meeting this morning, and then we're also looking at a boiler replacement in, in this building here, too, which needs to be done, which is starting to leak pretty bad, so. Next thing I got, it wasn't a meeting on, but jail ministry, which is on our agenda, showing us that there's a jail ministry benefit tonight, just making people aware of that. And I also have an extra, if anybody knows somebody who wants to go to it, I came up with an extra ticket 'cause someone couldn't make it, so if someone needs a ticket for that, let me know, I'll, I'll get them in there free. Just bring a checkbook. Oh, no.
Thanks, Frank.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Haney.
Thank you. Along with Commissioner Gross, we, I was part of the census committee discussion that he referenced, and I also attended the building capital improvement meeting with the five items that he just discussed, and that's my report.
Thank you. And let's see, I had Prairie Lakes and solid waste committees last week, and Commissioner Campbell reported on those, and also on the diversion authority. We had the jail and law enforcement center and juvenile detention center construction updates yesterday, and we already approved one issue that we talked about for detention, and that project is moving along well, though. I think Steve didn't, aren't we about, we're about two-thirds done with the project now?
We are now, yep.
Percentage-wise, so. So that's encouraging, so. And the jail is, you know, was slowed down a little bit, the, or the second phase of the jail was slowed down a little bit by the weather, the winds and the cold weather during the last month, but now that's going to be picking up again, and I think we'll see a lot of, a lot of movement there over the next few weeks. And the law enforcement center, of course, everything is, there's, there are some small issues there that they're dealing with, but all in all, that's pretty much done, so that was it for me.
I just had one thing. Going back to the hearing yesterday, the, you know, when they, when we talked about the DNR, when they said they're in a dilemma, they made it clear that they, they said that this project that they approved was in the best interest of the public, so they made that perfectly clear, that they, they recognized the need for a project. And they did say that they believe that their permit is defensible, and there were, there was a presence from both governor's offices were also in attendance at the hearing, so. So, and there was quite a bit of discussion about the, you know, as Judge Toonheim had earlier asked to get together and try to resolve it, so there was considerable discussion about the governor's task force that, that had been put in place, and that this was a result of that as well, so. So we kinda let the judge know that we followed through on what he suggested be done, so.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Last Tuesday, I met with Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Judd on a series of different shared county issues. On Wednesday, I participated in the capital improvement meetings and the census meetings that have been shared with, shared by our commissioners. That afternoon, we also participated in the pre-insurance committee meeting, and also spoke with a concerned citizen. On the 28th, I participated in the solid waste and the landfill discussion that we had this morning in board. I also met with Lori Georgia and Joe James O'Donnell on the upcoming changes with the expansion of, of the campus, the impacts on the budgets based on the heating and cooling and snow removal. Commissioner Mojo touched on our meeting with the Department of Agriculture, and we'll be working with Lori to set up some parameters from the county, and probably be bringing that before the board here in the near future. Yesterday, I took a tour of the juvenile center. There, right now, their plan is to move into the, as they, as they go into different phases, in June, they're looking to move into the expanded areas, both in the, on the two floors, and so that will be good as they've been experiencing, continue to experience different challenges with space, both of the secure and the non-secure programs. Participated in the owners' meeting for both the corrections facility, law enforcement center, and juvenile center. And then last, yesterday afternoon, I participated in the community facilities task force with the city of Moorhead and, and the Moorhead School District. Just, just two quick updates. We are, April 8th through the 12th is Minnesota Severe Weather Awareness Week, and Clay County will begin participating in statewide tornado drill here on, on April 11th. We've also, in conjunction with that, we've also done a fire drill that morning at 10:00 a.m., and we'll also be doing a campus lockdown drill that afternoon at 3:30. It should be noted for our employees that this year, the tornado drill will actually, as with severe weather, will be coming across our telephones, overhead paging and emails versus a buzzer like, like the fire. And a couple of years ago, we had a drill where we ran outside during a tornado drill, so we lost half of our staff. So that was, so this is a good, I think, a good alternative to, to how we're, how we've done things in the past. And so, and also just a note, Veterans Court is going to be having a graduation tomorrow, April, April 3rd, 12:15, for anybody that's interested. It's neat to, neat to see.
What time is that?
12:15.
Okay. Congratulations.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Anything else before the board today? Hearing None, or adjourned?